All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our public hearing for our 2024-25 budget. We're going to start with a road call. Kinsey? Becker?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Lee? Okay, we're all, um, we're all present. And with that, we will turn the floor over to Angie Robley.
Good evening, everybody. So as promised, I'm back for the second time this month. So on Monday, October 14th, I had proposed a budget. So we had some numbers that have changed because October 15th was when we received some final numbers from the state. So attached in the agenda tonight, you had the budget change analysis sheet, and that's what I'm going to highlight. Okay, there we go. Now I click it. Hold on a second. There we go. Okay, so, so we're gonna go through the change analysis sheet and then highlight some of the things that changed, very minimal. And then later on, you will be voting on two levies, one with the passage and one with the non-passage of the referendum. So we'll go over that briefly as well. Look at that. It worked. Okay, so some highlights from the changes. Sent it October 14th, and then now is overall, the changes to expenditures and revenues in Fund 10 budget or our operational budget was $6,218. So that was all that changed out of our budget. So that was, um, that, I think that's the best that's ever been, actually. So this might be my, my best year in my career. So one of those differences was we received 382,000 less in equalized aid than what was estimated. That is very minimal, and the offset would be property, would be property taxes. But overall, it did not change our mill rate or our proposed mill rate of $7.65 per thousand. Another number that we received final were the vouchers. So we came in about 150,000 less than I had anticipated or that I had estimated. So we'll go through those numbers in the next couple of slides as well. And then another number that significantly increased, I guess not significantly, but increased quite a bit, were our payments to independent charter schools. And we have one independent charter school that falls within the district. That's New Leaf up in Howard or Swamaco area. And that added an additional expense of $343,000 because there was an increase in students from last year to this year of 29 students. So that was the difference there.
Angie, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What's the, uh, what's the total payment that we paid in New Leaf? If you don't have that, that's okay.
No, the, um, the total payment is $1.1 million, and that's on our change analysis sheet. Um, under that expenditure, Fund 10 expenditure changes, it says payments to independent charter schools. So in the original budget that I proposed, it was 762,000. But with the increase of those students, um, it jumped up to 1.1.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so like I had, had talked about before, so we will be voting on, or you will be voting on, two separate levies today, um, later on in the meeting. One with the passage of the referendum and one without the passage. And this just shows us the history of that mill rate again, back from 2016, 17, and how that has just naturally dropped, um, you know, for the last several years. Um, and for 2425, we're proposing with the passage of the referendum, a drop in that mill rate of 61 cents and 65 cents. And I think what's important is, is that we all, um, or that we should all know and recognize is that the strategy for, you know, has always been for the school district is when we pay off debt, so we will be paying off that 2022 referendum debt, um, at the, during this year. So when we're paying off that debt, it gives us an opportunity to ask the community to support a referendum, address our capital needs, um, and kind of borrow that money so we can keep that mill rate either decreasing or declining, or keep it as stable or steady as possible. So we avoid those peaks and valleys. Um, and this is a great opportunity for the district to be able to go out to referendum for $183 million and yet see that mill rate drop 61 cents. So I think that's, um, that's a, it's a great opportunity for the district to do good things. Any questions on that? And then here, here is the voucher. So I waited to, to bring this information to the board just because when I came before you, October 14th, we didn't have those numbers. So again, like I had, had said, that voucher number for 2425, um, came in at 12.7 million. In the original budget, we had budgeted 12.9. So it was about 150,000 less than what we had expected. There was an increase in voucher students this year compared to last year of 62 students. So again, we're seeing that, you know, the, the kind of leveling off, I would call it. We have a cap. We have a, um, like that cap goes up every year that we could have 8%, 9% of our students, you know, are in district, receive vouchers. And we have never come close to, you know, to capping out. So, um, so we had a slight increase this year. But then again, as you can see, from 2223 to 2324 and 2425, there was that significant increase, which we've talked about because of the significant increase in the amount per voucher that we are now paying and levying for, um, with this last biennium or state biennium budget. Are there any questions on vouchers? So we will be levying 12.7 million in 2425 for vouchers.
So 62 more students. What's the total number of students?
Currently, there are 1,169 students who receive a voucher.
I'm sorry, Angie, can you say that number again?
Yep, 1,169.
Go ahead, Lynn.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you aren't, we aren't able to determine what percentage of the students have been Gbap students in the past? That is correct?
That is correct.
Anybody else? Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, that's the end of your presentation?
That's it, Laura.
Okay, well, we just like, we just like having you.
Somebody must have had, put new batteries in here, maybe. I'm not sure.
Okay. All right. Um, we are now in the, uh, public open forum part of this, uh, special meeting. If there's anyone who wants to speak to the budget? No? All right. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned. Hang on just a second. Then we're going to have to reorder the... I'm sorry. Yes. All right, so this is the, our regular board meeting now. I want to welcome you to our, uh, regular Board of Education meeting for October 28th, 2024. And we're going to start again with a road call. Lee?
Here.
Crossen?
Here.
Gerlach?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Lyerly?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Okay, so we're all here. And we were joined at the table by two of our InterCity Student Council members. Will you please go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Hello, my name is Andres Mora. I'm a senior at Preble High School, and I'm the Green Bay InterCity Student Council President.
Hello, my name is Galilea Matous. I'm also a senior at Preble High School, and I'm a Preble InterCity representative.
Welcome. I think we'll be hearing from you in a little bit, so. All right, uh, next, would you all please, uh, rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, you're up for the mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. Next is our land acknowledgement. "We, the members of the Green Bay Area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk Nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the 12 diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities." All right, um, that brings us to, um, our recognition portion, which our person is not here yet. So I think we'll have to reorder the agenda. Can I, can someone make a motion to put? Go ahead.
Likes to make a motion that we reorder the agenda to move open forum with items A and B ahead of recognition? Second.
Do we have to vote on that, or do we, can we, on favor? We have to vote? All right, Kinsey? Oh, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so then we're going to skip over recognition for now and go on to, uh, our InterCity Student Council report. Go ahead, guys. I believe there's slides involved. This is a new, this is a new thing, and, and I'm really excited about it. Oh!
All right, so for this meeting, we created some slide shows with some pictures that we can see the various activities going on at our school. So, um, our first one here for East, we have the mayor visited, um, East High School to talk about leadership and various jobs of the mayor. This year's musical, The Little Mermaid, has its opening night this Friday with shows this weekend, and I believe next weekend. And then East had their homecoming parade and their homecoming dance.
All right, so now for John Dewey. These are some pictures of Jaidal's Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. And, uh, Ja, John Dewey is currently holding a supply. So it is a smaller school, so not as many pictures, but they still have some stuff going on.
Okay, over at Preble, so Preble beat Southwest at their homecoming game. Preble Boys Soccer won the title of regional champions. Preble, both Preble Boys and Girls Cross Country Team won, uh, sectional champions, WIA sectional champions. And then we had a blood drive on October 9th, and this year's musical is gonna be Guys and Dolls.
All right, for Southwest, uh, the football team had their last home game against Ashwabenon. They hosted a blood drive with, which had a total of 42 units of blood donated. They celebrated Orange Shirt Day in remembrance of the history of the residential slash school board for Native and Indian children across Canada and the United States. And they had a homecoming kickball game on the new softball diamond.
And then over at West, they had their Pink Out volleyball game in order to spread awareness on breast cancer. And then this year's musical is gonna be Cinderella, and then over on the right is a picture from their homecoming football game. All right, and then this last slide I included, since it's like throughout the whole district, this is from our marching band showcase. So, um, uh, all four high schools participated in the marching band showcase this year at Southwest High School. And, um, it was great to watch each of the high schools perform their halftime shows, as well as a combined piece that included the UW Oshkosh Titan Band. So it was great. It was really fun. And then that is all for our report this meeting.
Thank you. Does, do any of you guys have any questions with these InterCity Student Council members? I do like the slides quite a lot, that, that, those visuals are very compelling. So Brian, go ahead.
Do you have dates for the musicals for, I know East is this weekend, or could you get them to us if you see?
I can send those out. I don't know which, how to be, I can forward it to Ms. Bayer, and then she can send those out. I know, um, Prebles doesn't start until January with the auditorium, but I know East is this weekend, and then I'll, I'll see if I can figure out when West is and Southwest.
Thank you, guys. All right, uh, next on our agenda is our public forum. Is there anybody who wanted to speak? Okay. Then we're gonna move back in, um, back to recognition. I think our, our honorary, uh, recipient has arrived, so, um, I'm going to just read a statement and, um, just bear with us, Senator. I'm sorry? Um, yeah, why don't you, would you join us at the table, please? Hi, just have a seat and make yourself comfortable. All right, so this is the Friends of Education, um, award that we've, uh, decided to give to Senator Robert Coles. "The Friends of Education Award is bestowed upon an individual, organization, or group whose leadership, acts, acts, or support have significantly benefited the Green Bay Area Public School District, its employees and/or students. This year, we are acknowledging Senator Robert Coles, who has served Senate District 2 since, I can't believe the date, 1987." That... Yeah. Uh, it's remarkable. "In recent years, Senator Coles has championed clean water in public schools, grants for esports competitions, revenue limit relief for energy projects, eliminating the revenue limit freeze where voters have rejected an operational referendum, and school safety. During the last state biennium budget debate, Senator Coles was also a strong advocate to hold legislators to their commitment that public education would have an increase in public funding after the previous state budget froze per pupil funding for two years. Senator Coles has been a frequent visitor to our schools and has attended numerous graduation ceremonies. He has always been willing to engage with school board members. I, I've had plenty of engagement with you, sometimes in grocery stores, which I have, I, yeah, just run, it's a perfect place to talk, so. And district administrators to explain proposed legislation or various details about the state budget process. And just on a personal note here, um, I just want you to know that from my family, we really appreciate your support of Civil Hop as well. That's from, um, I have a loved one who was a student there, and I, we always noticed that you, um, were a big supporter and showed up for a lot of their events. So I just wanted to put that in there. Senator Coles, we thank you for your service to the state of Wisconsin, the Brown County area, and the families, students, and staff of the Green Bay Area Public School District. At this time, I would ask Senator Coles to come, well, here you are. So I think, I think that's you, Vicky. We're gonna ask you if you'd like to say a few years, a few years, a few words at the podium.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, this was very nice, but totally unnecessary. This gives me a chance to thank all of you for your commitment. As, as you all know, th- this is a rough time to be an elected official, to be a staffer, to be a, almost any kind of a government employee. So, um, thank you for that. So although I accept this humbly, um, and I, you know, wish you the best and your credible motives, you know, a declining districts are, it's a rough time. And I, I've been following, uh, your activities, and these are tough things. These districts that are expanding, they've got it made. But when you're declining, you've got a lot of tough decisions. In a multicultural district, it's even more challenging. So it gives me a chance to wish you all the best. It's a tough job. So thanks for this. Hopefully, I can help you some way along the way, but it, it won't be in Madison. Those days are over. Thanks, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you have.
Does anyone have any questions, Brian?
I just wanted to share with, uh, with you, Senator Coles, um, you know, haven't always seen eye to eye, but you've always been a gentleman and have responded to phone calls, and I appreciate that. And I don't know if you remember the first time we met. I'm gonna give you a hint. You had a brand-new car, which is pretty common now. And we talked about the, you brought your Prius when I was teaching at Washington. And we had talked about the energy efficiency part, and you drove around the parking lot, and we showed some kids the, the cool battery thing where you could see it, because it was probably a first or second generation one on that. And it's just, those little moments, I remember, you know? And, and I appreciate it tremendously because who knows what happened with some of those kids? That maybe they saw that, and they, they got involved in science or something else with that. But just making that connection to our community, I really appreciate. Like I said, there's, you know, there's been differences of opinions as we've gone through, but you've advocated for public education in areas, you've advocated for the environment, and you, we've always known what we're getting with Senator Coles, and I really appreciate that. So thank you.
I do, I do remember that, Brian. And, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm still driving one of those high-efficiency cars. I'm not that far along. So best wishes to you.
Any other questions? All right, let's have one more round of applause, guys. Okay. Thanks. James, if you need to say anything, um, make some noise or something. I'll try, I'll try to pay attention, but I don't want you to feel like, um, you, you're not being heard. Okay?
Certainly get it.
Okay. All right, we're moving on then to updates. Next will be the superintendent's update. Vicky?
Thank you. As we started last month, I will, at the regular board meeting, provide some updates about, um, a link to our critical priority of intentional community engagement. In addition, you'll see me slip in a couple of the, uh, activities related to the other three critical priorities as well. Oh, thank you. All right. Just like the students mentioned, uh, district staff also celebrated, or, um, I don't know if it's necessarily celebrated, but did a recognition of wearing orange, um, for our indigenous brothers and sisters. Can't remember if this was late September or early October, but Lori Blakeslee, Lynette Keenan, and I were invited to participate in the kickoff for the Taste of the Draft. This is a fundraiser, and it's connected with the draft that's gonna be here in April. And the fundraiser by Schreiber Foods will help feed our students. So we were honored to be a part of that and are looking forward to, um, recognizing the, the, the great gift that we'll get from the community to support our kids. Because it's fall, we have a lot of activities going on in our schools. This is highlighting Dr. Rosen Minoka Hill School, their Fall Harvest Festival. It was held outside this year. The weather was great. Uh, that's just one example of the events that are bringing our communities into our schools. Uh, other examples are, of course, the trunk and treat event. This was Red Smith with UC Willie up there in the left, yeah. This was just last week. I know we have a bunch more coming up, uh, this weekend. Third graders over at Kennedy, uh, are learning to write letters. And I was the fortunate recipient of a few of those. So, um, I had the pleasure of going over and responding to the students in person. The letters were regarding, believe it or not, the referendum. And, um, third grade, they wanted to know, what's our new school going to look like? And will our teachers come with us, and what will the mascot be? So it was, it was a fun time over at Kennedy, celebrating with our kids. I had mentioned to the board last month that I am on the board with the Chamber of Commerce, and they had invited me to participate in a panel last month that, um, was for the young professionals. And the panel was about school funding and referendums, and how those young professionals can get involved in politics and public education. The family engagement team has kicked off their achievement summit. We do these every year. I believe this is the sixth or seventh year we've done these. Uh, for anybody that's not had a chance to experience them, I encourage you to get involved and join. October was the Latin, eh, let, how do I say that? Lat, Latin? Latine, thank you, okay. Summit at NWTC, they hosted for us, and, um, it was a great turnout. This is an opportunity to expose our eighth graders to the opportunities that come with post-secondary education. Human Resources has partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to provide our new staff with an opportunity to tour our community. And this is part of our And this is part of our retention efforts, again headed by our HR department. Pretty good turnout. They get to see really unique things about Green Bay and that helps them feel a little bit more connected with the community, which helps them. Be more likely to stay with us. Of course, the referendum presentations went on for the last four weeks. We hit the 53 mark. Thank you for all of you that were able to attend and join us. It was a variety of presentations. This one on the left. Was over on the west side of town in the woods. It was a Halloween party for students. But the adults were there as well and they received information about the referendum. It was a lot of fun. In addition, we did some lunch and learns throughout the community during the day. And then our last one was yesterday. With WFRV, Kale did an amazing job. If you haven't had a chance to see it yet. Great opportunity to have a wider audience and shout out to Tom Zalaski. He's a fantastic. His son actually went to Preble High School. Mike was his teacher. He was a very gracious man and I think the, the interview gave the community a great opportunity to learn about the referendum. He is a fan. Yeah. Last week Cabinet worked on some budget reduction strategies. Our goal is to prepare to share with the board. If need be, cost-saving measures. The goal would be by April for us to have. A plan for the board to make some decisions on. Da Vinci has each year done an event, fundraising event, and. The money helps to support our veterans and two of our staff members from Da Vinci were honored last week. To be invited to travel to Washington DC with the Old Glory Honor Flight Mission. Phenomenal experience and we're so proud of our, our schools and our students for raising funds for this. I also serve on the Achieve Brown County Board and last week we celebrated the 10th year anniversary. And with the celebration, they invited Webster Elementary to perform. They did a musical. It was wonderful, well-received, an audience of over 200 people at the Meyer Theater. That was a lot of fun. And. I've got one more. Kins, can you help? Oh, nope, a couple more. Almost done. Okay. Was this last Friday?
Thursday.
Last Friday, okay. Last Friday, we did the Sullivan Elementary Playground Ribbon Cutting. This is another new ADA compliant playground for our community. And mom came to that one. Our staff continue to be recognized for the amazing work that they do. Nick Brilla, top left, he's our information system supervisor. He was awarded the Data Storyteller Award, which recognizes expertly used data analysis to inform strategy. And drive instruction. On the top right, that's Principal Jason Johnson. He's the principal at NEW School of Innovation. He was invited to join the State Superintendent's Advisory Council for Charter Schools and he will serve a term of two years. Bottom left. We received a note of appreciation from DPI for Eisenhower Elementary Teacher Adriana Panita. For her work with migrant students, primarily focusing on last summer and the work she did to support our students. And then finally on the bottom right, Kelly Rowe and Brittany Bartle are two of our Preble social workers. And they will be representing our district at the building, the hearts of successful school conference in the Dells. Kins, one more time if you could. Oh, there we go. And. Thank you.
All right. That was great. Thank you, Vicky. All right. The next on our, on our agenda is board member updates. Would anyone like to share what they've been up to? Anybody? Go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, these are the updates from, since our last update. In the areas of students, teachers, district and community. For students, I visited the following schools. Chapel, Kennedy, MacArthur, West, J.D.O.L., which I had a great chance to do some class participation in that school. That was really. A fun time there. Washington, Southwest High. Southwest, I got a chance to, their Future Farmers of America group hosted some elementary school kids. And I got a chance to, to show off theirs. As well as, I was also at the, the marching band showcase that, that Saturday. I've been to Monocahill and Red Smith and the Sullivan for the playground. For the teachers, I've been talking to a lot of teachers, been just getting some anecdotal firsthand, very. Front end of the school year feedback on how the curriculum is going and it's all been very positive. They're, they're very energetic. I think that's, that's the report back to the board and they're leaning into this, this whole science of reading. Coming back is a, is a good feeling and they're seeing some, some very quick results already. Can't wait to see the data when it, when it starts to show. There's also on the teacher's side of the things, I had a chance to have a second follow-up meeting with David Harzwick and Brent Berkstrom. The Bay Educational Association, got a lot of good perspective from them. As far as the district work, I'm still involved with the Portrait of a Graduate work, strategic planning and then the superintendent job description. And, and again, some good movement on, with all, on all of those fronts. Had a chance to meet with Ms. Mai Vang to learn more about her role as the recruiter and then the things that. That she is doing and wanting to do and it's very exciting. I, kudos and a shout out to, to the work that she's doing. Also involved with the sustainment meetings that they do. I got an invitation from an adjacent school district to come talk to them and also to participate in one of their veterans. Events that's, that's actually next week, but I wanted to highlight the fact that. There, there's surrounding districts that are looking to, to, to our school district for examples of how to function in a multicultural world. Whether people like it or not, or want it or not, diversity is happening all around us and they're looking to our school district to see how it's done. And that's opportunity. And, and I think anytime any of the surrounding districts reach out to any of us. For, for aid and assistance, we should be leaning into that. I think this, there's nothing but good that can come from that. First, community activities and involvement, some follow-up meetings, again, to get feedback and input from some of the groups. Casa Alba, Amanda Garcia and her team, Robin Scott with We All Rise and her team. Had some good conversation all the way around about just their perspectives. I also participated in the Oneida's Get Out the Vote Rally. That was a really. Eye-opening and enlightening opportunity to meet with the, the civic, the leaders of the Oneida Tribe. Thanks to Mr. Lee, I had a great opportunity to present. It was an honor to present to the Hmong leadership, my own personal story with, 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 with those groups and thanks. Koo for, for that opportunity. Met, I would say three individuals who I think are good representatives of folks in the community. Who are trying to make a difference and looking for more of a connection with our district. To work with most of our, with our at-risk youth, most, you know, the majority of those groups. Shout out to Zachary Pate, founder of Little Hearts, Big Minds. He works not only with kids in our district, but also some of the surrounding districts. Damian Dorn, whose personal experiences, I would say, serves as a testimony for overcoming adversity. He's got a YouTube video out called The Awakening, which I would really recommend that you see. His name is Damian Dorn. And Tasha Greenleaf from the Urban Cultural Arts and Events Center. She's doing some good work with, with the, with the kids in our community and with. Folks in there and they're very interested in, in, in making contact and connection with our district. To go after a lot of the common issues that, that, that we're all dealing with and working through. I also met with a lot of parents. Talked about everything from school security. To serving in the local PTOs, talked about youth attendance rates, grades and parental expectations. And again, common ground is, is all over the place. We all want the same things as far as all of that goes. I too participated in some, not 53, but some of the referendum information sessions. Got a lot of chance to help clear up some, there's some, there were a lot of misconceptions, as I know you, you know, Vicky and Laura. I was also, I'm becoming more and more involved with the Achieve Brown County initiatives to improve literacy and I did participate in that 10-year celebration as well. I also am a member of the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point Advisory Council. And I talked to them about Portrait of a Graduate from their perspective. What were, what are the universities looking for in a college-ready student coming to them? So I'm seeking input from, from that particular university on what it is that they're looking for. From a high school graduate coming into the college world. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. I'll just share a few things. I've got quite a few, but I'll just, I'll keep it to a few usual referendums, lots of referendum things. And some parent calls as well. Some of the things I would like to highlight, the, the Monocahill Fall Fest was really nice. They, they did such a nice job and I enjoyed myself so much. And then the marching band showcase. It was a beautiful day. All of our high schools have new band uniforms. And they, our kids looked so sharp. I was just so happy to see that. Cause I know often a lot of time goes between purchasing new uniforms. It's an enormous expense. But boy, did they, go ahead.
So I'm part of the Preble Band. A lot of the students are really excited this year to finally have new uniforms since the last ones didn't. They weren't bad. They just weren't like. Up to standards for what a modern marching band uniform is. So. That was something that the band like took into consideration when designing the uniforms, something that would be able to last a long, like a long time. So yeah, the students are really happy with those uniforms and I think we looked great in them. So.
Yeah. I think the modern, the more modern uniforms are a little more user-friendly and a little bit more durable and just. Easier to clean and all kinds of things, right? So anyway, seeing all the bands on the field together. Playing the same music was, it was just a beautiful visual and it was great. So. And then the, the other one, Vicky mentioned it, the Frisk Park Neighborhood Association Fall Fest. I didn't know what that was going to be before I got there. Turned out there was piles of adorable children in costumes and the gorilla which you saw and. We had plenty of good conversations about the upcoming referendum. And I think Vicky was handing out treats at one point and it was just a unexpectedly delightful event. They do a very good job. And then I was very happy to finally have my first visit to the Hmong Community Center. I was brief because when I got there, they were in the middle of what appeared to be a very intense karaoke competition. So we, we couldn't, there was singing. And, and so we, it was an abbreviated kind of event or a, a visit for us, but. Lori Blakesley was there and Denise Gummer Hutchinson was there with, with the US Campaign. And so now I've been there and I hope to be back very soon. So that's kind of what I'd like to share. So anybody else? Go ahead.
You know, sometimes I, I wish that we could have more time to, to share or to engage the community. And, and I want to thank Rick and Dr. Pooja for participating in that community event that we had at the Hmong Center. I thought that was wonderful and that also gave me an opportunity to. Present the resources that we have in the community, the rich resources in our district to the community. In terms of what the parents can do or what kind of things they could. Looked at to, to present to their children as far as, you know. That if you, you know, college preparatory courses or yet the vocational programs that have available here in the Green Bay School District. So these are wonderful programs. I realized that some parents was surprised to know that. We have programs such as the International Baccarat Programs and they didn't know those things exist. And I think that kind of brought some excitement in the community. So I hope that in the near future, we could do more so we could communicate. A lot more to the community with these kind of resources to make them proud, to make them feel that there are. Programs that we do care about their children, that we're gonna make sure that their children succeed. On top of that, I was, I, I had the honor to also meet Amanda Garcia, who is the. Chair for the Latino Community Center here, the Casa Alba. To, you know, introduce myself and to also communicate some of the concerns. From their community, what their needs are and, and, and also talking about engagement where we as a district could gap the. Whatever that is, there's a gap that I'm hoping that we could gap, the gap for them. And I thought that was productive and I think that's an ongoing process and I will continue to do that. And I had the opportunity to also visit We All Rise and I didn't get a chance to meet Ms. Scott, but I had a chance to meet. Many of the staff and I, I was very pleased to meet one of their new employee. Who just came to our country six days ago and, and I had a chance to. Talk to her a little bit and, and it brought back a lot of memories. I told her my family came to this country in 1987. And she looked at me and said, wow, that's many years ago. I said, I know time will fly and. And eventually one of these days, you're gonna talk into a new person that you've been here 30, 40 years. So that was great and I, I look forward to, to reach out to soon in the near future here to the Somali community. And I hope that we could gap the, any gap that we have between us and the community so that we could. Open this dialogue or this communication so that we could better serve our community. And I think at the end of the day. Everybody wants to see our students succeed. So, you know, those are some things I just did and I will continue to do that. And sometime I, you know, must cross and I talk and I, I sometime wish that I'm there, but I don't want to be there yet. Where I have, you know, the time to retire and have a lot of time on my hands to do a lot of things. So. But, but those are the things that I try to do as a member of the board and I will continue to do that. So thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. We're gonna move on. Next is our strategic planning update, which I'm very, very much looking forward to.
David is gonna join us at the table and I'm gonna kick it off when Kenzie gets things set up. She's getting so good at this. I'm gonna begin at the end. Okay. So we're going to talk tonight about using foresight in strategic planning. And let's see how well I do with this. I did it. We're going to try, our plan, the three of us, David and Rick and I, is to incorporate some of the tools and techniques of strategic foresight into a strategic plan. So we're going to focus on inspiration. Aspiration. And perspiration. With inspiration, we're going to start and it's already been started, as you know, with Portrait of a Graduate. And so that will be when we get the picture of what the ideal graduate of our future will be, we will have some inspiration. Our aspiration will take the form of looking at different horizons. We're gonna look at the near horizon, the far horizon and everything in between. And then we're going to go to the perspiration part and that's just the, you know, the gritty part where what is the work? And that's just the, you know, the gritty part where what is the work we have to do to get there? And we'll start with a domain map. It's very tiny. It's just an example of what it might look like. You're not expected to try to read it. Okay, so we're gonna talk first about inspiration, Portrait of a Graduate. And you know that started, there's a survey going on right now. It'll be finished by October thirty-first. Uh, David says we're gonna have it summarized by November fourth and he has a little update for us on that.
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Um, excited to share that the uh data collection for Portrait of a Graduate is well underway. Um, you may have seen signage throughout the community. You may have seen some things strategically. Uh, placed in areas where people gather and ideally have conversations about our schools and our community. Um, we have launched uh surveys to our students that are taking place during some dedicated time within the school day. And of course, data that we collected over the summer from all of our various engagements. And so um, we will ultimately have uh by the end of this week. Um, feedback from thousands of our residents. Uh, people who have children in our schools, people who don't, people who are employees of the school district. People who are not and all cross-sections in between. We're also paying attention to where we're not yet hearing from different groups of individuals that we know um should have a voice in this. And so what will follow the initial data summary uh will include some focus groups uh where we'll bring some folks together. Uh, to um elaborate on some of the questions that we answer in the survey. This doesn't necessarily add more volume to the survey data. It gives us a richness and maybe um a little more focus and direction as we work on uh um. Uh, the strategic plan. So um, through November fourth and soon after then, we will have a a profile that is shaped up. Um, and ready to use for the important work of planning for the next three to five years for our district.
So the Portrait of the Graduate will be the starting point and the inspiration. And then, oops, we went backward. Sorry about that. Um, the next thing that we need to talk about is the domain map. And that probably is going to be a rather new concept to most of us, so I'm gonna explain that. Um, again, this is very small, just to give you a picture. But down there in the right-hand corner, that's an example of a domain map. So what is a domain map? It is the central topic for study. It's the ecosystem we're gonna be working in. So if you look at that gray circle right in the middle, not that I expect you to read it. But that is the uh definition of the system that these people are trying to improve over the next few years. Yes, the light gray one in the middle, not the dark one, right? Okay, so this is a way to visually represent the key elements that are likely to impact the future. We identify critical issues and forces that we can, that we see coming at us. Emerging trends that we're starting to see develop. We identify potential opportunities for the school district. We think maybe about fifteen years out, which is kind of standard, although I'm not trying to say this is a fifteen-year project. I'm just saying that's approximately how people think when they're using strategic foresight to plan. And this domain, the boundaries of the work that we're gonna do. So. Here's an example. Here's that same one you just saw, but you, it's bigger now so that you can kind of read it. So in the middle, that light gray circle, that is the definition of something that this group wants to achieve. Over the course of several years. Now look at those darker circles around it. The brown one and the blue one and the gray one, the green one and the red one, those are their domains. This is where they say, if we're going to achieve this, what domains do we have to focus on? And then outside of each domain, you see by the color coding. That each one has been fleshed out with specifics regarding that domain. We're gonna talk a little bit more about that. So you begin with the critical domains. Here's another totally different example. This is a group of people who decided they wanted to look into creating lab-based meat. And they said, what are the domains we have to focus on? So they said, we have to consider production capability, political dynamics, environmental sustainability, our supply chain and our consumers. So that was the beginning of their domain map. Here's another one. This is the Dudley-Birder Corral. They said, we gotta think about our future. What are our issues, our forces? What are the trends and opportunities that we see? What's going to impact us as a performing group for the next fifteen years? So they've decided to focus on singers, audiences, funding, music, responses and affiliations. And here's an example of how the Dudley-Birder Corral filled out their domain map. To make their plan for how they're going to change. They learned some very interesting things in this process. One of them is that their key audience is really not the audience out in the house. It's the singers on the stage. That's the real heart and soul of it all. That's the people they had to play to. So we just took a stab at starting the domain map for the school district. And this is all just proposed as possibilities. We um, at this point have identified the district as an interdependent, high-functioning school system. Delivering results for our students. There might be different critical words that have to be put in there. That has to be worked on. And then David and um, David then took a stab at identifying the domains we might have to consider. And he did um, take, you know, spend some time with Vicky, letting her have some input into this. So they considered maybe we need to um, look at um academic excellence. Um, operational excellence, family and community engagement, a thriving student body and a thriving workforce. So that could be the beginning of our domain map for our school district. And if we did that, it would eventually turn out like this. We'd take each of those domains and for each domain, there would be a domain leader. And that person would be someone who has expertise in that area. And that um individual might ask one or two other people. Um, to join the team and 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 help work on that domain. And then all of those circles that are color-coded, that's where they would put in the measurable steps. Or measurable focus that's that's going to have to be looked at over the next few years to make some progress. So that their domain contributes to the system in the center. Good so far? Okay, so we have talked about inspiration. That was the Portrait of a Graduate. We talked about perspiration. That's the work of the domain map. And so now we talk about aspiration. And this is where we're going to look at our three horizons. Now, I wanna say this isn't done sequentially. This is all kind of done at the same time. So it's not like you make a domain map and then put it aside and now you go to the three horizons. It's kind of just like we're already starting the the Portrait of a Graduate. It all goes together. Okay, so here's an example of a horizon. If you look at the front part where you can stand in the sand and feel the water washing over your feet, that's the first horizon. That's Horizon One. Okay, this is the stuff that we can see. We know the temperature of the water. We can see the things that wash up on the sand. We know when the tide goes in and the tide goes out. We can identify the strengths, the weaknesses, the trends, the concerns, et cetera. That's the first horizon we're going to define. And we, in my opinion, we should be brutally honest about that horizon and not try to make it pretty. Let's make it exactly what it is. Then the next thing we do is we look at the far horizon, way out there as far as you can see. And this is where we find little pockets of our future have been embedded in the present. And some of them are weak and they're fuzzy, they're unclear. Some of them are positive, some of them are threatening. But we start to to imagine when we're out there on that horizon. In that very special ship, that's just exactly what we hope it will be, taking us in the right direction. Hopefully, we will see a graduate who fits our portrait. And we will start to enjoy that far horizon. But then we're gonna look at the next horizon. And that's what we are going to glimpse in the next two or three years. That's the part between our current horizon and the far horizon. So we look at alternatives to our current vision. We see them starting to appear. We see that there are trends. We want to shape them to go in the direction that we want. So you look at the, at the water coming up onto the shore. That's today's reality. We look at that first, very critically. Then we go way out to the far horizon and we try to envision exactly how we'd like it to be. Understanding we're not gonna be perfect. But based on what we have today, what kind of a a vision do we want for the far future? And everything in between is how we get from here to there. That's Horizon Two and that is our strategic plan. From where our feet are touching the water to out there where that wonderful ship is going to be going in the right direction. Is our strategic plan. So here's just one other way of looking at it. If you look at this picture, you see down on the bottom, it says you are here. You're on the trail. This is where you're going. But look over to your left, where you wanna be is on the top of that mountain. You can clearly see that that path is not going to take you to the top of that mountain. And so now, once we clearly know where we are and we absolutely know where we want to be. Our job is to re-root that path so that we get where we want to be. So timeline. By Thanksgiving, this is a very aggressive timeline. By Thanksgiving, we want to have the Portrait of a Graduate summarized and finalized. We want to have our domain map started and all the domains identified and the ones that we're gonna stick with. All the domain leaders should be assigned and they should have built their teams. And their teams don't have to be big, but they have to decide who they want to work with them. I know there's more coming. I'll just keep clicking. There we go. By the first week of December, we would like to collectively agree, agree on a timeline for our horizons. That means we will decide by the fir- first week of December. How, when, what are the dates for Horizon One, Horizon Two and Horizon Three? In other words, when are we gonna get on that ship? How long are we gonna swim all the way from here to there um for Horizon Two? And then by Christmas, when we leave for Christmas break. All the domain teams should have assessed their domain's current status and submitted the results. And we should have Horizon One described candidly and honestly. Not thinking about, you know, this is overwhelming or we can't do anything about this. But simply looking at where we are today. That's the first step. Okay, then we're nearing the finish line. By January twenty-second. We'd like to use the Portrait of a Graduate and our description of Horizon One to. Engage critical partners in discussion. This would be the job of the domain leaders and the domain teams. So they would say, who are our constituents? Who should we go to to get some input? It's not just a great big um, you know, survey that the whole community is asked to do. And by doing that, they now describe Horizon Three just for their domain and they submit it. So by January twenty-seventh, the leadership team. And the domain teams have now finished their description of Horizon Three and that's the place we want to get. That's the vision for the future. And so by February twelfth. The domain teams have identified the changes they're gonna have to make to get from domain, from Horizon One to Horizon Three. In each critical factor. And this is where they're gonna point out the danger points, the dark spots, the challenges. And we are going, they're gonna work with their constituencies to finalize their picture. Of how they're gonna swim from where the water is now out to that ship. And then Horizon Two is starting to shape up. And so we are putting a plan in place. By February seventeenth to March fifth. The leaders draft the district-wide plan. In other words, we draft Horizon Two. We ask the teams to weigh in and help fine-tune it. We submit it to the Board of Education. And our goal at this point is that on March tenth of next year, Board of Education will approve the new strategic plan. Yes, ma'am?
Just, can I verify there won't be any skydiving involved?
I I cannot promise that. Um, we have to keep our mind open to what the the future will bring.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to lighten it up a little, that's all.
So if you have any questions, uh, Rick and David will answer them.
I say we achieve, but we all should go skydiving to celebrate.
Well, that did look like a school board scared out of their mind, all all leaping at the same time. Okay. Yeah, floating for him. Okay. That's the end of your presentation. Thank you. That was very interesting. Um, yeah, any questions? Anybody?
Mark.
Oh, uh, hang on just a second, James. Go ahead, Co. Okay, go ahead, James.
I was just wondering, so can you hear me?
Yes.
So looking at the presentation, I just wanna confirm my understanding. So this is internal administrative action. Until we receive as a Board of Education, a draft plan in Q-one of next year. Are there any opportunities for board members between now and Q-one? To have any level of participation um in in the plan? Up until we receive a plan in, I think it was March fifth, February, March, according to the presentation?
Would anyone like to answer that?
I will. Yes, there, there, there's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity to uh connect with the identif-. Well, first and foremost, the, that core statement in the center is obviously something that would require. Uh, the board to to be aligned with and to approve. Um, attaching uh or have each board member could attach themselves with a particular domain. And do the work that would be uh contained within that. Um, there will be uh milestones along the way to verify. The, you know, whether or not we're going in the, in the, in the right direction, obviously. So yes, there, there's, there's plenty of opportunity for. Board, board involvement and engagement with with this. And and it should be because then we've got ownership of the whole, of the whole thing. And uh, it shouldn't, this, this thing should flow very smoothly if that, if that is the case.
Yeah, so Rick, I appreciate that answer and um, so now. My understanding now that this is kind of like a a rough outline of dates and that there's detail in between each of these dates. Um, David, I I guess, I don't know if it would be um Rick and Lynn. Or David, it would be to you to, you know, make sure that we know in advance those opportunities. And how, you know, we can, we can engage. I know that, you know, we obviously have the number of board members available at each meeting has to be controlled. And how we separate these activities from notice board meetings, whatever. But I'm interested in participating and I I love the plan. And um, just, you know, I would love to know how and when I can help.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, some of the dates that Lynn attached to the timeline actually do correspond with. Board work sessions, which would provide a a robust opportunity for discussion. Um, the other, the other opportunity within is that strategic planning is one of our, our four core uh critical priorities this year. And so um, our, what we bring to you for discussion purposes and sometimes action are aligned with those four. So um, as often as we get together with you as a board, um, we would have opportunities to provide um some input. Um, I just wanna, I wanna mention one thing about the domain mapping, which, which uh really excites me as a leader involved in this work. To me, it really brings to life uh the process of identifying your strategic priorities. So just to do a little bit of like connecting this um, really innovative and visionary approach. With some traditional strategic planning processes that maybe you've been involved in. Uh, what's identified around that circle on the inner ring fundamentally are the strategic. And as a board, that's your purview to um to approve. And so very early in the process, you would have a look at those um and be able to weigh in on. Is this exactly what we're prepared to invest in over the next five years?
Okay, James, is that all? Did you have anything else? Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, Co.
I think this is uh, this is exciting time. Uh, the the strategic planning gets is fantastic. That's a wonderful idea. And I think that uh, uh, it will help us mitigate a lot of risks in the future. Uh, in terms of, you know, um, uh, academics, achievement, in terms of. Uh, somehow, you know, improving the efficiency that we have already, but improving it on it more. So that we could uh uh make it more efficient. You know, identifying the things that we do really well, also improvement on that. Uh, and and I think that overall, I think that that hits a spot where I think that we're gonna be able to identify. and target our certain position, our certain things that we do in the district that I think it's going to be key for our survival in the future. So I think this is fantastic. Can't wait to participate.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Brian.
I guess I'm going to kind of direct this. I'm going to ask Andrew about this as well with it. I appreciate the time that went into this. I get the concept with it and the approach. Is this similar to ways that we've looked at strategic plans before? Does this does this fall under the same expectations of the Board and the same process? I guess, I mean.
I would say that probably probably all of them have been fairly significantly different. I would say they were generally what I would call staff-led with Board input and essentially ratification. So, I also think they were so I would say probably so general and be good things to do, but I don't know how guiding they were. I don't know how, if you take some of the previous strategic plans, if one of the planks had been written, you know, differently, or emphasized one of our values differently than the others, what would have really changed in actual action? So I guess my philosophy on it is as long as there's I like opportunities for Board involvement before. Obviously, you know, what's happened in years past is we would be told, well, the Board the Board votes on the end product. Well, of course, the Board votes on the end product. But if it's been entirely if it's been entirely written by staff, then what are you left with? Wordsmithing something that other people put hundreds of hours of work into, or just, you know, voting yes, you know, voting yes or no, and what does that mean? So, to me, it seems like there is a bit more a bit more opportunity for Board involvement here. I think it's earlier on when it would make a difference. I think it's I think it's important to have a strategic plan to clarify our values. I don't know how this iteration or any iteration is how dramatically it will change how we do things, because it's reflecting the values that are there. And certainly, a complete turnover of Board could result in new priorities any anytime. But that said, I think this is a good process that offers input to the Board.
And I, and thank you for that, because I know that Rick is bringing in a unique skill set from his time in the military and within executive leadership positions in an area that I'm not familiar with. So I appreciate the fresh perspective and the way that we can kind of get that roadmap to having this set up. So, and Lynn, your creative part is obviously included on this. And I'm glad to hear that it follows similar to what we've done before, where we're going to be able to have our fingerprints on it before it comes to the Board, but also that we still have the final approval on there. So, I was a little concerned just kind of seeing where the different things come out, but it kind of makes sense. And, you know, Andrew has many years of experience on the Board, and I will trust his perspective on that as well. So, thank you.
Anybody else? When I saw preview of this, I think I said something to Vicky, like, this makes our old strategic plan look a little dusty, or at any rate, this feels fresh and modern and advanced. And I am very much looking forward to the coming months as we go through this process. All right, anybody else? Go ahead, Lynn.
I just want to clarify, this didn't come from the United States Army or from Schneider. This came from my many years of experience with strategic foresight.
I'd say thank you, Lynn.
Okay, I think we're going to move on then. Thank you, David. To the legislative update.
There is, man.
All right. Yeah, there's not much going on in Madison right now, as far as I think everyone's go ahead. Yes.
I think roughly about three days ago, President Biden took the, on behalf of the United States officially apologizes to the First Nation for the Indian boarding school that took place in the early 1900s, all the way to the middle of the 21st century. So I thought that was fantastic, and I thought that that is a long time coming. So I just want to share that with the Board and members at home.
Thank you. Yeah, I think a lot of, most of our legislators are busy campaigning right now. All right, then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Would someone like to please read the motion?
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
What about removing items?
Do you want to remove some items? All right.
I'd like to remove item F for separate vote.
All right. I'm not sure. Go ahead.
Like to amend my motion that consent agenda items A through E as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions? Go ahead, Lynn.
Just want to make sure we noticed that we have tremendous gifts, again, given to the district. Very generous gifts.
Yes, I read those, and I was very, as always, incredibly grateful to our community. All right, if any other questions or discussion? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Oh, there it is. Rick, Lynn, and Andrew. It came through as not present at vote. Do you want do you guys want to voice vote, or do you want me to reopen the online voting?
Can you reopen?
Let's try it.
Yeah, I don't know if we've ever tried that before.
All right, did it pop up again for you guys? Okay.
Are the people that already voted supposed to have it as well? Oh, yeah, mine popped up. Okay.
Co, are you able to vote? All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
Okay, hope that's not a precursor to all these other votes we're going to have to take tonight. So, all right, that passes. And now we're going to take up F, Charter School Authorization Report. Andrew, did you have something that you wanted to share? Go ahead, make the motion.
Move that consent agenda item F Charter School Authorizer Report be approved.
Second.
Right, discussion. Go ahead, Andrew.
I have no objection. I just think it's too significant of an item to be put in with others in the consent agenda.
Brian?
I think it was a great presentation that came in at our last Board meeting, and the different ways that we're meeting our learners at different levels, and meeting where they're at. I have full confidence in the leadership and the staff of the two schools that we have listed on here. And this is a fantastic opportunity for us, and I think it's what helps make Green Bay successful. So, Andrew, thank you for the foresight to have that removed, so we could point that out.
Anybody else? I agree. It's something that we should single out and celebrate. So, all right. If there's no further discussion, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're going to move on to our action items. We have about 10 of them. We're going to take a series of votes with the opportunity to have further discussion or questions. But just letting everyone, anyone who's watching from home or in the audience that these items have all been discussed to some degree at our last meeting. And so, if we just make our way through these votes, it's not that they haven't been contemplated and discussed. And just wanted to share that. Okay. First is our final budget adoption. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the 2024-2025 final budget is presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? I would just note that Angie, once again, did a fantastic job putting this together for us and communicating to the public the financial priorities of our district, and the stresses on the system, and all the good work that is done through the resources that are given to us by the taxpayers of this community. So, all right, anybody else? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is B. Would someone please read the motion?
I move that the levy of $109,351,151 as presented be approved.
Give me a second.
Second.
All right. Discussion or questions? Kinsey? Oh, Brian?
I know at times when people are going to look at this, and they're going to look at the mill rate changing between the two options. And I just want to stress once again how previous Boards have been fiscally responsible to come up with a sound budget and referendum plans that are on a consistent basis, because it's responsible budgeting. We have a large district, and we have responsibilities that in this time of the way we fund public schools in Wisconsin, it's unfortunately a reality that we need to do this. And the decrease in the mill rate is not worth it. But we need to make sure that this passes, and hopefully that we can continue to fund our schools.
Right, anybody else? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
All right, C. Would someone read the motion?
I move that the levy of $76,928,29 as presented be approved.
This is the final levy certification upon non-passage of the referendum.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
Okay, next is D, Middle and High School Activities Director Job Description Update. Would someone read the motion, please?
I move that the Middle and High School Activities Director Job Description as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, questions or discussion? Andrew?
I appreciate the couple rounds of revisions and changes here. I think their education-related field was the right place to wind up. Just about anything could be related. So I think there is, under the minimum qualifications, we could look at someone non-traditional, while at the same time not picking out a path that might be confusing to someone who has a different, non-traditional path. And in reality, I think it's difficult to meet the skill set outside of education, though not impossible. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered, and the motion is carried with all Board members voting in favor.
All right, next is E, Superintendent Job Description Update. Someone read the motion, please?
I move that the Superintendent Job Description as presented be approved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Go ahead, Lynn.
I just have a question. If we pass this, and then we start the strategic planning process, if during the strategic planning process, we feel that this needs to be modified or something, is that possible? Okay.
Okay, Ryan?
This question's going to be from Melissa on this. It's the 24-month position minimum with salary and benefits as determined. Is that standard? Or I remember asking, but I forgot what the answer was last meeting.
So I think we addressed this at the last meeting. By law, a contract cannot be more than two years. I think the order is to recognize that it could be at a different length as well. Typically, the length of a contract isn't in a job description, but with the modification, I think that helps.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other questions? Brian?
I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion that we strike the terms of employment of 24-month position minimum with salary and benefits as determined.
I will second that. Any discussion? Any questions? Anybody? Go ahead, Brian.
I don't think we need it in there. I think it would be in our contract, and I think it's understood. And I just, I think that's not necessarily the place for it, so.
Okay, I think the last time at the last meeting, I agreed with that. I still agree with that. So, go ahead, Lynn.
I just wonder then why it was put in. Because, I mean, I certainly assume if we were looking for a superintendent, we would certainly expect someone to stay at least two years. So I don't know. I've never looked for superintendent.
I think what Brian said about, well, go ahead, Brian. You can speak for yourself.
I think through the different versions that we've had provided with this, and the approach that was delivered. And I appreciate a Board member going through and getting this created. I think it was added, and I'm not sure if I'm correct on that or not, if it was taken from the previous one. But I think this was a good draft for us to start with. And one of our Board members had a lot of time into it on it. But I think it was an individual idea on there, and the Board as a whole never really discussed it, so.
Go ahead, Rick.
It was in that original version as one year. And the conversation, it wasn't
And the conversation, it wasn't a it wasn't a unilateral or an input, what what was what was concerning was the and and job descriptions by definition are not binding, that comes in the contract, we know, but the intent behind how long the employer was intending at a minimum for a superintendent to be in this position would be two years. So it it was very appropriate to put that desire in the job description as opposed to the one-year stipulation that was in the previous draft version. So for for the conversation was, well, if we, because that wasn't my idea to put a time limit in this format, I used the exact same format in the previous description. What I did was, instead of one year that was in that one, I said two, to express the board's intent that whoever applied for this role or was in this role, there would be an expectation of at least two years. That's why two years is in there.
Andrew?
So I think in the end, it doesn't, I I don't think it's going to, I mean, yes, you probably shouldn't signal incorrectly that one year or 12 months is is a common expectation, and usually we'd be hiring also hoping that someone wouldn't be planning on just two years and out as well. But I think the probably the most correct thing to do is to just not say it, because I don't I don't know that, I mean, either either party can end under the terms of whatever contract is negotiated anyways, so I guess in order, my preference would be to not state a time followed by if we do have to state a time, I guess, say 24 months, because that's the base contract usually, but I I don't I don't think if I was worried that it would make a a difference, I would I would think there was more at stake here, but I I don't think it's going to affect who applies, and I don't think it's going to affect what happens when when people apply, but it's better not to say 12 months.
Okay, anybody else want to chime in? James? James?
So, yeah, Brian, I don't know that this is an appropriate friendly, right, or if it's a friendly, all Rick has to do is accept or deny, right? Because right now, we're not set up to vote on your amendment, he's just to accept it.
Go ahead, Brian.
You're correct, and I'm more than happy to make this a motion if if need be, but.
Go ahead, Andrew.
There is one more thing about the month definition that I also think isn't really a problem here, there are I think there may be places with very small school districts that the superintendent might not be on a 12-month contract possibly, like we have we have some administrators that might be 11-month contracts. But I don't think that distinction is, no one would think that of a district of this size, so I don't think it's critical for that reason, too, but I just want to point out, there's a couple of different versions of what do you mean by X number of month position?
Lynn?
I just want to be clear, I don't quite understand, I thought Brian made a motion to remove this from this from the job description, and you seconded it, so I'm assuming we're going to vote on that first, no?
He made a friendly, he asked, he positioned as a friendly, which is no vote.
All right. Go ahead, Brian.
So, we should have asked if Rick accepts that, because you made the original motion, correct?
Right.
So whether you accept it as a friendly or not.
All right, that's the question.
Help me with the point of order, then, what are my options for response for this? Yes, or yes or no to your to your proposal, then I would say no.
Okay.
All right, so then that negates that, go ahead, Brian.
Like to make a motion that we amend the terms of employment to eliminate the terms of employment 24-month position minimum with salary and benefits as determined by the Board of Education.
Okay, I'll second that again, so. Go ahead, Brian.
The the previous, my understanding of the previous intent with having the one-year part was because we would also go into kind of like a rolling contract where that extra year was added on every my time on the board, we've had that contract, and then we've added that one year, that one year, that one year onto it as well, and I think that's where the 12-month came in before, so.
Maybe Melissa can answer this question, if a superintendent that we have hired would have this 24-month con our agreement and left before their time, let's say, just a few months into their time, would we still have to pay out for two years then?
So if I can just go back to Brian's point, he's correct on why we it's a rolling contract, so the original contract is typically 24 months, and then you roll it for another 12 months so that there's two years, but that's the contract that, again, the terms of a job description are not binding, which Rick recognized. And so I I also think there may be times where you might want a contract for 12 months, for example, in interim or some other reason where you only want a 12-month contract. So I I would, again, I go back to my position of you don't need it in the job description, you don't want it to conflict with your contract, and you can spell it out in your job posting, you can spell it out in your in your contract.
Okay. All right. Anybody else want to speak to this? Then we will take a vote on this amendment, Kinsey?
We'll do a voice vote on this one.
Okay. Go ahead, Rick, Rick has another question.
So we're clearly, are we voting on the original? Or we're voting on the amendment?
The amendment, yeah, and then we'll vote on the origin, we'll vote, okay, as with or not as amended, go ahead, Kinsey.
McCoy?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Lee?
No.
Becker?
Aye.
Crossen?
No.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Did you vote? Lynn didn't get to vote.
How could I miss? Gerlach?
Aye.
Okay. All right, the motion carries, so now we are going to vote on the job description as amended.
I move that the superintendent job description as amended be approved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Go ahead, Co.
I just want to, I just want to thank the the board members and the staff members that are involved in coming up with the board, the job description. I thought that it was time to to put something together that is reflective of our need now and also going forward, also reflective of our students' needs in the district, so I thought this is fantastic. I believe that people, individual board members and staff has put a lot of effort and time into coming up with what makes sense for us at this point in time, so I just want to commend those people that are involved for doing a good job.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, I think we're ready, Kinsey.
We'll do another voice vote. I won't miss you, Lynn, this time. Lyerly?
Aye.
Crossen?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Gerlach?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, all right, we can move on then to F School Security Drill Review, could someone read the motion, please?
There's a lot of numbers in this one, I move that pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 118.074 CP, the written drill evaluation submitted by the principals from all district schools as reviewed be accepted.
Second. All right, discussion, questions? Okay. Go ahead, Lynn.
I just want to again understand, by accepting this, are we simply saying that that we are meeting a requirement of reporting on these security drills? And that it has been duly done, and we've read it, and that's it, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is G Revisions to School Board Education Policies and Rules in the 300 and 400 Series Policies. Would someone read the motion, please?
I move that the revisions to the Board of Education Policies and Rules in the 300 and 400 Series Policies as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay, questions, discussion? I'm sure Melissa's just dying to come up here and go through all of them individually. I know she's prepared. So, all right, I think we're ready to vote, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is H Repeal of Board of Education Policy 357 Before and After School Programs, would someone read the motion, please?
I'll move repeal of Board of Education Policy 357 Before and After School Programs as presented.
Second.
It's just that little bit of delay, James. It's not to your advantage. All right, and discussions, any questions? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, next is Aye, would someone like to read that motion, please? Go ahead, Lynn.
I move that the Board of Education approve the authorization of commencement of insulin litigation against manufacturers of insulin and pharmacy benefit managers as presented and execute an attorney-client fee contract authorized in the legal services of the France Law Group, APLC, as attorneys for the district in the mass tort lawsuit against manufacturers of insulin and pharmacy benefit managers.
All right.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. Next is Approval of Clean Energy Advisory Committee Membership, would someone read the motion, please?
I move that the individuals identified in the Clean Energy Advisory Committee memo to serve on the committee as presented be approved.
Second.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
Thrilled to see a couple of students on here, one of them I reached out to and agreed to and was selected, which makes me very happy that we have some involved students and other community members on the important work we're doing here.
Anybody else? We had some, we had eight applicants, they were we had some very good applicants, and going to these meetings has been really, Kale is just doing a fantastic job, and our, the committee is doing a great job, and some of you have been able to attend these meetings, but we're, our numbers are a little low, and that's why we went through this process. We won't revisit it again until spring, even if the numbers drop below again, and our goal here on out is to only revisit this in the spring once a year, so. All right, if there aren't any other questions, we can vote, go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
All right, that completes our voting. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Not opposed? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education Meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.